Good evening.
Good evening.
This special meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners will now come to order. And at this time, I will call on Commissioner Ken Edge for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Would you pray with me, please? God of love, God of truth, God of life, and God of hope. It is difficult for our minds to conceive the tragic event of this past weekend, and our hearts are heavy as we grieve the loss of our fellow Americans. Our lives and liberty have been severely challenged. We know that in such devastating and shocking events, that we hardly know what to pray, and yet we know that in you and you alone, we find hope, comfort, and strength. Lord, we thank you for our freedom, freedom to gather in public places, and freedom to pray, and we thank you for the many acts of kindness and heroism that have taken place these last few days and even as we pray now. Lord, we pray for the injured and the bereaved. We pray for those that might not know the fate of their loved ones yet. We pray for the safety personnel, the law enforcement, the rescuers, the doctors, and the nurses. We pray for the leaders of our nation, state, and local governments, whether they are seen or unseen, heard or silent. Grant our leaders wisdom, courage, and strength. In your wisdom, Lord, grant us those things that will lead us towards wholeness, love, and peace. Bless us in this time with your holy and life-giving presence. Our faith is strengthened, forgive our transgressions, and help us to know that peace on this earth begins with each of us individually. Bless this meeting and guide each of us to action in our own unique way. Help us to think good thoughts because our thoughts become our words. Help us to speak good words; our words become our actions. Help us to act good because our actions become our character. And help us to have good character because our character becomes our destiny. We pray for these things in the name of the great Creator of beauty and life. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
... pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Edge. Those words are very inspiring to all of us. I'd like to announce that this special meeting is for the purpose of hearing from the public regarding our 2016-2017 budget. And at this time, I would open the public hearing, and I would ask, first thing I want to ask are the rules for the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we would ask each speaker to come to the lectern and state their name and their address. We would also ask that their comments be limited to three minutes. We'll also be running the timer to keep track of the time and basically state the purpose of their request.
Okay, and I would remind everyone that we may just take information under advisement. If a specific commissioner has a specific question, I will allow that. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
We have a total of eight speakers. Our first speaker is Alice Dar Ray.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Alice Dar Sebastian Ray. I live at 3383 Hawthorne Street. I'm a seventh-grade homeschooler. I'm here to talk to you about the library. I've been going to the library for as long as I can remember. My parents always took me to Storytime at the library. We used to live in South Florida, and our local library was Nova Southeastern University. But we moved here in June in 2012, and then we searched for our local library, and we found Holt Mills Branch Library. And the lifestyle and the people are different, but the library remains the same. And I love going to the library. I love that you're able to check out books, check out movies, go to activities and programs. I've made many friends with libraries. Librarians are always so helpful. And if there's a book we can't afford to get, I can go to the library and check it out if I need to use it for a school assignment. Also, I've been selected to be an NCAA Student Library Ambassador for 2016. I'll be going to Raleigh to advocate for the library. I'll be talking to congressmen on the local level. I also did this in 2014, but I was not selected in 2015. And I hope you fund the library and support them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Ray.
Hello. My name is Angela Renee Ray, and I live at 3383 Hawthorne Street in Holt Mills, North Carolina. And I'm currently the 2016 president of the Friendsville Library. And of course, my son was up a few minutes ago, so I'm not going to really speak too much about it because he already said so much about the library. But I feel like public libraries, it's more than just books and checking out, it's more than just books and seeing people at the library or the librarians, it's just that public libraries is a place that people can still go there and interact and imagine and explore. A library is for the whole community. And my husband, Henry, and I always made a priority to bring our son to the library, and it fostered his love of learning at such an early age, and it continues to do that for him. So, lastly, I just hopefully hope that the funding will continue with the libraries because it's very important to our family and to the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Daniel Montoya. Our next speaker is Ms. Teri Thomas.
Hello, my name is Teri Thomas, Executive Director of the Vision Resource Center. I'm addressed 508 Spalding Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. First, I want to thank each and every one of you Commissioners and the county manager for having us and allowing us to speak today. I am here to actually recommend reconsideration for funding of the Vision Resource Center. And Alvin Rix is one of our participants, and she would like to tell you why.
Hello, my name is Alvin Rix. I live at 6532 Brookstone Lane, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am a participant at the Vision Resource Center. The Vision Resource Center steps in and helps its clients when other agencies fail or tell us we are not eligible, or that we are not qualified, or that we have to wait until later. The Vision Resource Center has provided everything from Braille and computer instruction to independent living skills, as well as lighthouse keeping and transportation. They provide transportation to those who have out-of-area medical appointments, which no other agency will take them to. They help us with everything from food shopping to doing whatever is necessary to help us remain independent. To me, the main goal of the Vision Resource Center, which started in 1936 and was one of the first groups funded by the United Way, is to help blind and visually impaired individuals, youth, and adults in this Cumberland County community stay independent as long as possible. And to that end, they help us remain movable through exercise programs. They help us through becoming and remaining still viable and active participants in the community in whatever ways we are able. And to keep us encouraged, we are a family at the Vision Resource Center. And as with any family, we encourage each other and ourselves. There's no one in this family that if they called on one of us at the time of day or night, that we would not respond to their need. And we are asking and hoping that you will reconsider taking on another nonprofit organization. We are fighting for every penny that we can find to help us maintain our programs and help our family stay independent. We are non-institutionalized. Therefore, that is a burden that is removed from you, the county. So we thank you for anything that you can do to help us remain independent and non-institutionalized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, actually two, Deborah Mintz and Jean Moore.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, Ms. Cannon, Mr. Moorefield, and all of our county leaders, thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for the leadership you provide in this county, the hard and tough decisions you make. We are also grateful for the ongoing relationship you have had for cultural arts in our county and the recognition that they are vital and important. You have in front of you our annual, the Arts Council's annual report. If you haven't taken opportunity to flip through it, you will see what you already know, and that is the production of community, significant community events, education programs, exhibitions. If you do flip to page fourteen, you will see there a list of organizations that have received support from the Arts Council in the 12-month period of fiscal year 1415. You will see many of those organizations are listed there and in another location who are speaking tonight. We are proud to have been the stewards of your funding, and we proudly support cultural arts throughout the community. I will also tell you on the next page, fifteen, look at volunteer service. In that 12-month period, over 1,700 individuals volunteered directly with the Arts Council. Think for a moment of what that volunteer bank looks like when you look at the entire arts, cultural arts, community. If you go to the last page, well, next page, that's an important one. That's page sixteen. You will see that for every dollar received by the Arts Council, 58 cents went to support for organizations, schools, and artists. 32 cents went to community programs and development, and a very responsible 10% for administration. And if you go to the very last page inside, you will see a breakdown of organizations who received funding from the Arts Council in that time period. As we look forward to the new fiscal year, two of the new initiatives we'll be embracing, not only we will continue with what you have in your hands, but two new programs. We've done a municipalities allocation. That's an allocation of funds for every municipality in Cumberland County outside of the city of Fayetteville, seed money to develop cultural arts programs in their neighborhoods. The second one is that we will be participating and have started our participation with the misdemeanor diversion program. In fact, we believe that we are developing the very first arts component for that program. We're not aware of that happening in Durham at all. Ms. Moore?
I don't need my whole three minutes. I've been thinking all today about when Deborah said, "Would I come?", what is it like to be a member of the Board of Trustees at the Arts Council? Well, I think I started about 15 years ago, and I go away for a little while, and I just keep coming back. And it's because of the pride in what is in here. And if you really look at this, please be sure you're sitting down because you're going to need a nap. The amount of work that this staff and a very, very dedicated board accomplishes is pretty amazing. And I said to Deborah today, the thing that is most, one of the most significant things about being on the Arts Council Board is the diversity that we have on our board and that we're not cookie cutters, we're in all parts of the community. And I said, "You know what? There is only one person on this board that I would consider as someone I socialize with." And that's pretty significant because we're touching every part of this community. And I do thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do because, as a businessperson in this town, I know how important the quality of life is, and that's what's happening right here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Thomas.
Good evening. Jim Thomas, 212 Fountainhead Lane, and I'm here representing Action Pathways and Second Harvest Food Bank. I wanted to first thank the Commissioners and the county for the support they've given us in the past, and I wanted to provide you guys with a few numbers to demonstrate the need here in Cumberland County. 64,430 individuals face food insecurity each year. That's one in five of our residents. This year, over 11,000 backpacks were distributed through our program to Cumberland County schools. A total of 3,290,354 meals were distributed last year through our Hunger Relief Network right here in the county to all our districts. As cliché as it might sound, the need is great, as those numbers indicate. But the impact of your support goes beyond numbers. Your support directly affects the most vulnerable. It provides hope. For in my humble opinion, no one should go hungry. It's tough to put into words what your support means, so I'll leave you with this short story that kind of helps describe the support and what you allow us to provide. At one of our produce markets at the food bank on the second Saturday of the month, I happened to engage a Cumberland County resident. I could overhear her talking with her mother and could clearly tell she was Russian. I happen to study Russian in college, and I always enjoy engaging people who've been there and have lived there. From that simple conversation, I had learned that this lady had married a man, moved to the United States, had three kids, and her husband happened to pass away. She's a U.S. citizen, her three kids were born in the U.S., and it's been a struggle with her language barrier to obtain employment. She was asking about job opportunities and really looking for anything. You could genuinely tell at that moment that her life was a struggle, just like it was for so many other people. Offering some suggestions on potential programs to help her, our conversation ended. She was thankful for the fresh produce. It wasn't until the following Tuesday that I fully understood the impact that we had had on her. That Tuesday was our Volunteer Tuesday, and standing at the doors to our distribution facility was the Russian woman and her mother. She came up to me, and all she said was, "I'm thankful for your help. You fed my family. I'm here to help." With no money, she offered the only thing that she could to ensure that others had the same opportunity to access food that we had given her, her time and effort. There's not one face to hunger in our community. It impacts all ages, genders, ethnicity, individuals, families, homeowners, renters, and the homeless. Thank you to the Commissioners and the county for your support as we work towards our goal of ending hunger.
Our next speaker is Dr. Ann Newell.
Good evening, everybody, and Commissioners. It's so good to be here, but it'll be good to be done. Well, as Mr. Thomas just stated, I'm here, oh, my address is 305 South Land Drive, Fayetteville. And I pastor the Soul Harvest Apostolic Church in Spring Lake, North Carolina. My partnership with the Second Harvest Food Bank began in 2002. I was in line at a food line, buying food, to do what I do with a partner of mine, and I call her a partner in progress because we've done a lot together. And there was a lady behind me in the store, and she said, "Looks like somebody's preparing to feed the homeless." How she knew, I don't know, but I do know this, that lady's name, and she's no longer with us, but her name was Sue Lockamy. And she said to me, she said, "I can show you how to make your dollar go further." And I said, "Well, how would you do that?" And she made an appointment with us to go to the facility where we served the homeless on Person Street in downtown Fayetteville. She looked at our facility, she offered suggestions for how we could put things together a little better, and then she made an appointment for us to come over to the local food bank, and she gave us a grand tour and the paperwork to become members. I worked with that program for a year, and I still work with that program, but I was in the process of getting my own program up and running. So in 2003, I began my partnership with, my own partnership with, the local food bank. My church became a member agency with the Second Harvest Food Bank. At that time, we began serving about 40 families a month. Now we service over 1,000 families every month. We receive our referrals because we're in Spring Lake. The schools call us, the police department calls us, our local Department of Social Services calls us, and they call us because they say, "We can depend on you." But the reason they can depend on us is because of the partnership we have with Second Harvest. We run a summer learning program. We feed summer lunch to the children. We have a soup kitchen. We do commodities. We have our own food bank and our own food pantry. But what the food bank does for us, it gives us access to some referrals we wouldn't normally have. You know, I learned something a long time ago. I learned that if you partner with somebody else, you can do a lot of stuff that you can't do by yourself. The vegetables and the fruit and the food, it's just a small portion of what we're able to do. With less, we can do more because of our partnership. Please continue to fund the food bank.
Our last speaker is Ms. Cynthia Wilson.
Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, I'm delighted to be here. Cynthia Wilson, 228 Summertime Road. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Action Pathways, and Second Harvest Food Bank is one of our divisions. And I'm here to say thank you and to echo the comments of my colleagues about all that, the wonderful things that Second Harvest does, and through your support. You've met one of the pantries, and it's one of 160 pantries that deliver food to those who are food insecure in the county. The food pantries operate through volunteers, since it's a lot of volunteers, and these are your neighbors who so generously give of their time and talent to help their fellow residents. So I thank you for your support for Second Harvest Food Bank and also for your neighbors and residents who also help us by volunteering. Second Harvest Food Bank is sometimes called the safety net to the safety net, with, of course, the county's Department of Social Services being the first line of the safety net. I'd like to draw your attention to a partnership that may deepen, actually deepen, the partnership that we have as a result of the implementation of the food nutrition services policy that is changing as of July 1st. I'm thinking about the Able Body Adult Without Dependence Policy, which places severe restrictions on the number of months someone can receive food stamps. One option for continuing to remain on the FNS rolls is to volunteer. And so what we offer is that, should you have a resident who is affected by this new policy, that they can come and volunteer with the food bank. Of course, not everybody, volunteerism isn't for everybody, and so that there will be people who no longer are able to be on the rolls. And with that, of course, that is when the safety net to the safety net comes into play, and we will be working through our pantries to provide food to those individuals and families. I thank you for all that you do. I thank you for being able to celebrate with us some of the successes because people who are hungry and because of circumstances in their life, they rise above those circumstances. It's not something that is permanent. I also thank you in advance for the challenges that we're going to have to address with this implementation of the ABOD program because it will have an impact to both your county, Department of Social Services, and then also to the pantries as we stretch to assist those who need some additional help. Again, thank you. Thank you for the support, and then thank you in advance for the work we'll be doing in 2016, '17 together.
We have no further speakers.
Further speakers. I'd like to thank everyone coming out and sharing their thoughts with us. Thank you for what you do in our community, and we have one more item on the agenda that we're going to look at before we go upstairs, and then we'll recess upstairs. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing. And the next item.
Mr. Chairman.
You can whip them out if you want to. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, go right here, go right here, and I need to pass these out anyway. Everybody get one in? I'm sorry, I should have given y'all a chance to answer.
Thank you. Good to see you. Yes, sir. The next item is an item that Mr. Moorefield's going to present.
Last week, in discussions with the chairman, I received some information from Mr. Tommy Bradford, who is the owner of an entity called Rapid Centers LLC. It's a limited liability company. His company purchased a parcel of land up on Ramsey Street in 2006 that had been formerly used by the hospital for the operation of an express, a small express care clinic. Going back and finding all the information that I could find about this matter today, I discovered that the Board of Commissioners actually approved the sale of this property to another one of Mr. Bradford's company on August 1st of 2005. And that was done in an open meeting, August 1st, 2005. It was to be declared surplus and sold for no less than $350,000, subject to the upset bid process, which is the process you're all familiar with, I think, in selling surplus I cannot tell from the documents that we have why the transaction didn't take place, but it didn't take place. In May of 2006, some eight months later, the county transferred about 70 parcels of property to the hospital corporation. These were all camp properties that the county owned, which were being used or had been used by the hospital for hospital purposes. This building on Ramsey Street was one of those parcels. When the county transferred that property to protect the county's interest, it retained what's called a reversionary interest in the property. The hospital had six conditions that it has to meet, continues to have to meet, to keep this property. And the way the agreement was, the way the agreement reads, if the hospital doesn't keep all of those six conditions in place, then the property reverts, goes back to the county. county. The agreement did give the hospital the authority to sell up to 20% of these assets without the consent of the Board of Commissioners. The agreement did not address the county's reversionary interest in any property that the hospital sold. What that means, it just goes back to general contract and general real estate law. So, all that was done, that's... So, in May, it was transferred to the hospital. In August of 2006, the hospital transferred the property to Rapid Centers LLC. It's another private, for-profit company owned by apparently Mr. Tommy Bradford. It's... The record of this was...